Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 27, 2022 New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting. The prayer tonight will be given by Alderman Prill.
Thank you, Mayor. We have residents in another part of the country that are facing a very serious weather event over the next couple, three days. We can certainly appreciate what the potential impact of that event may end up being. So I would just ask my colleagues, as well as everybody in attendance tonight, to keep those individuals in their thoughts and prayers. And when the time comes where requests for assistance are made, that you consider helping out in any way that you may be able to. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. If you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Sir Fai?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Clark, if you would, please call the roll.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Here. Alderman Royal?
Here.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Odom?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman Best?
President.
Alderman Brinson?
Here.
Board, entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Have a move. Have a motion. Have a second. Have a second. Any discussion? Call in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Moving on to the consent agenda. Any questions or comments?
If there is none, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Have a motion. Have a second. Any discussion? We could have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. It is approved. Number 10, we've got an update from our friends at MetroNet. Mr. Manager, any comments?
Yes, sir. I'm happy to have MetroNet come in to give us an update on where things stand. So we've got Chris Smith, Eddie Massengill, and John Autry to give a brief presentation on where things stand and what we can expect very soon.
All right.
Thank you, Foster. Alderman, thank you again for having me this evening. I greatly appreciate it. Again, I'm Chris Smith. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for MetroNet. I'm here to give you an update, do a little Q and A for you. My colleagues with me tonight are Eddie Massengill, also with Business Development and Government Affairs, and John Autry, who's the local North Carolina Market Manager. So just as a quick reminder, MetroNet is the largest nationwide independently owned 100% fiber-to-the-home provider. We have 18 years' experience. We got started in 2005. We're currently operating in 16 states and over 250 communities. I'm proud to say that New Bern is one of those communities. As a reminder also, we started this project around the end of 2022, of last year, and our response so far has been extremely positive. Over 1,000 pre-sales currently in our hopper, so we're loving to see that. And it all starts, you know, in a couple of different ways. We're a fiber overbuilder, so we're currently working on the construction, placing that 100% fiber, and we pass resident homes and businesses here in the community of New Bern. We communicate as we do that construction progress, and that's what we're currently doing with your residents and businesses. We restore as we go, and we release service to those areas as we go. Currently, and I brought kind of a rough map, I know you can't see it too well, we do have a dedicated website for construction-related items. So what to expect during construction, how to contact us directly with questions, maybe that's in regards to your yard, where those lines are going to go, what it's going to look like. It's all construction-centric. Here's the website for that. There's an interactive map that I placed up there. It shows you future construction, current construction, and where it's complete. I'm excited to tell you that we'll have our first area complete in the next week or so, and we'll be lighting that area. Our tribal language for that is LCP-8. And so we're pretty excited that that's coming online, and once that seems to follow, it's like dominoes, and it goes pretty quickly. We're about, and I'd say, this is a rough estimate, so bear with me, we're around 30-ish, that's official-ish, percent done with the project. We have quite a bit of underground in, we're starting to pick up on aerial, that typically goes just a little bit faster for us. But please feel free, anytime you're interested in visiting, you know, what that looks like or how things are going, that is an interactive map. Where residents or anyone that owns a business can place their address, and it will give them a map of where we're building. As we start to release for service, there's a link at the bottom where people can go in those pre-sales that I mentioned to you earlier, where we're having such a great response. Shows New Bern's ready for a different choice, and so we're excited about that. We're still also on target to complete our initial build-out. I will say maybe by this time next year, but late summer seems pretty accurate. And then, once we complete that initial plan build, we'll look for expansion opportunities in any areas that are private, multi-dwelling units, apartments, and things like that. So that's a lot of information for you. What questions do you all have for me?
Board, questions?
You know, one of the hot topics always be how much does it cost? Will you be competitive?
Extremely competitive. Again, we believe in bringing an alternate choice to the community, so we're going to be very in line, very competitive. We'll have a lot of specials. Residents, especially in those areas, as we start to release, once we get past contacting them for the construction piece, we'll start to contact them with special deals and rates. We are a month-by-month contract company, so no long-term commitments. We want you to try our service and see the difference.
Another topic that comes up, the internet for a lot of kids that live in rural areas. Would you be able to provide for them as well?
Absolutely. Anything that's not currently already in our plan build, we always look for expansion opportunities. We do also, excuse me, participate in the Affordable Communications Plan, so we're happy to help with that as well.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. What other questions can I answer for you?
What other sections, oh, excuse me, what sections of town will be your first to go live?
So, you can't see it.
Yes.
And on that map shows an area. And Foster, can I ask you to jump in with me and maybe give some, like, some of the neighborhood names?
Yes, the area that's going to be coming online first is the Pembroke area. It's the closest thing to their hut location.
Thank you.
I met the guys this morning, worked in that area. And they were really at it, and there was, I think, the timeline that the young man given me was about two to three weeks, because he said they were splitting.
Yes, sir. So we're finishing our piece of the construction, which is getting that fiber in the ground. Then, as Foster mentioned, we have something, and again, sometimes that tribal language, right? We call it a hut, but it's our equipment shelter. So that's where the services come out from and go out to the rest of the community, and from there, we call that the backbone. So we're working to connect those two areas, and once those two connect, it's much easier for us to roll that out as we go. So yeah, I'd say next couple weeks is a pretty safe bet.
So your affordable plans are currently on the MetroNet website, so people can go in and look at the plans that will be available. Are they consistent with this area? I said, one plan covers the entire area or city, or is it different plans for different cities?
It's different plans, right? We all use the internet in a different way. Some of us connect 20, 25 devices. Some of us connect five devices. Some of us are avid gamers. Some of us are avid streamers for our TV. So we really want you to find the plan that best fits you. We do use, and I've got John with me today, we utilize what we call a consultative sales process. We don't want to sell you more than you need, but we want you to feel comfortable, whether you're working from home or whether you just love to stream Netflix on the weekends. And so we want to make that a competitive price that fits your household.
Are huts located in other communities?
Yes, ma'am, they are. That's really, that equipment shelter is what really houses all of our programming and things, and really connects it back to our home office.
So every community would have a hut?
They would have a hut or a cabinet.
Okay. So does it determine in what proximity, how close from one hut to another?
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly how we determine that, and we take a look at the overall density of the market that we're in. So we measure, you know, the average, we call it passes, but how many homes we're going to pass in an area, and what will best support the area.
As you expand out throughout the community, approximately what percentage of the community will be underground versus aerial overhead?
That is an excellent question, Alderman. I don't remember off the top of my head what we estimated for New Bern, but a pretty good rule of thumb that we follow is, where is your electric? So is your electric underground? We're most likely going to follow that, or your other utilities, if they're underground, we'll follow that. If they're aerial, then we'll follow that as well.
More questions? We are extremely excited. I know our residents and our citizens are as well, so thank you for being part of our community. We look forward to getting the first customers online.
It's my pleasure. Thank you all again for having me this evening. If I can help you in any other way or answer any questions, again, my name is Chris Smith. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Number 11, we have got a presentation on the Resiliency Plan Roadshow.
Yes, sir. So earlier this year, we adopted the Hazard Mitigation and Resiliency Plan. Part of that is the public-facing piece, where we take this on the roadshow to all the communities, civic clubs, neighborhoods, as many folks as we can to share about this. So we're going to ask Matt Shelly to come up to give a little bit more information about this. And Colleen.
Yes, Colleen and I are both working as a team on this one for rollout of the Resiliency Plan to the community. As we pretty much promised back in March, we mentioned that the plan is a living document and that we would be updating it with public input. So just as, I'm going to do like a brief little thing on what the plan is for the new members and for new people in the audience as well, and then Colleen will talk about the rollout. So we all remember the tragedies of Florence, and so the plan was in response to that so that we could prepare and build back better for the future. So the plan itself is based in, is based on a study area that's even larger than the city limits. It includes the areas around the city that you see on the screen here. Those are basically census-track areas to help with some data and demographics. So, but one of the first questions is, what is resilience? And basically, you can distill it down to the bottom of the screen here, the capacity to withstand, respond, and recover from an adverse event. And so we did a number of, quite a lot of public input for the plan itself. You can see this list here. Here's some examples of some of the marketing that we did to attract people to provide some public input. Then the plan went on with capability assessment to figure out what is our capability currently, and they reviewed documents and the rest of these items here on this screen. It included, of course, floodplain maps and things like that. So the vulnerability assessment, this was more of a, an analytical process where they, the consultants reviewed our community assets, our flood hazards and threats were also assessed, the vulnerability and risk assessment of each of those, and primarily, three features or threats were investigated. Floodplain inundation, so that's basically the streets flooding, the water rising and just covering the area. Storm surge, so from a specific storm like hurricanes, and then also, long-term tidal flooding and sea level rise. And so that kind of analysis looked like some of these maps here and there throughout the plan and the appendices. Result was to establish a strategy moving forward with six resiliency pillars to cover health and safety, housing, economy, infrastructure, natural resources, and our cultural heritage. We devised goals and objectives for all of these in concert with all of the public input. In the little right-hand corner, it says actions. So those actions were quite numerous, so we ended up with 61 different actions listed in the plan, and those would, of course, be augmented in the future by any additional public input. So at this point, we are in the process of putting this plan in action. So we have a grant with a consultant just to provide the technical support and the work support to actually carry out the implementation of the plan, specifically, in this case, the rollout of the plan to the public. So that is the third bullet there on this screen. And now, Colleen will take over and describe the rollout.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. We know that we have assets here to protect, one being our local government, two being our beautiful waterfront city, and third being our community. So how do we educate, inform, engage the public with resiliency and this robust plan we've put together? The Resiliency Plan is an 800-page document. The meat of the matter is about 150 pages, but we know nobody's going to read that. So how do we put together a strategy to reach people? What we've started with is an introductory video. Now, we have a couple of edits to make to the video, so we're not going to show it tonight, but we will use this as an introduction. We'll take a look back at Hurricane Florence and the challenges that we had during that storm, and then we'll illustrate the need for a resiliency plan. We're going to be at Mumfest this year. We have a booth on East Front Street. It's close to the restrooms at Union Point Park, where we will have all kinds of resiliency information. Two of the things we'll be handing out at Mumfest will be resiliency checklists for residents and also for commercial businesses. We're not going to weigh you down with a bunch of stuff to carry at Mumfest. We're also going to have these neat little business cards with a QR code on them. You can take it home, scan it, and get all the information about our resiliency plan. Matt actually brought, thanks for getting it printed out for us, so we do have an example of what those are going to look like. Also, our flyers. We intend to have several public meetings. We intend to put together flyers of those calendar meetings. We'll also have handouts, information that, for example, could be in your monthly utility bill. So for folks who still receive their bills by mail, they'll get all the resiliency information in those stuffers. Public presentations, not just to you, but think about presentations we could do to Rotary groups, Coastal Women's Forum, CIVITANS, things like that. We're strategizing and putting together two forms of our PowerPoint presentation to educate folks. The 15- to 20-minute version for those short, brief meetings, and then more of a 45-minute version for meetings and organizations that have a chance to take a more in-depth look at resiliency. Project website updates. If you go to newburnnc.gov/resiliency, you'll get all the information on what we've done to date with our resiliency plan. You can view the plan, you can print it, you can download it, you can see some of our funding sources. Phase one of the plan was completely funded by grants. You can see our grant funders on that page. You can look at some of the city projects that we've done. We started meeting with the department heads probably a year ago and getting an information download on the plans, projects, and even some of the everyday things that our departments do to improve resiliency. That is all on the project website, newburnnc.gov/resiliency. Of course, we plan to use social media to educate, inform, engage our public, and City3TV, our public education and government channel. We'll use email campaigns. Right now, we have about 100 subscribers to our resiliency email distribution list. You can sign up to get on that list at newburnnc.gov/resiliency. We actually reached out to them today and let them know that resiliency was on the Board of Alderman agenda tonight, so folks could learn more about our public outreach plan. We'll use press releases also to engage our folks, reach out to our local media representatives, and help them share some of our coverage. And lots more strategies and ideas for public engagement. Part of that and more would be our brand-new mass notification system, New Bern Alerts. We have 13 categories that people can sign up for to receive information from the city. One of those categories is resiliency. We also used that today to let people know that this item was on the agenda. So we're pulling out all of the items in our communications toolkit and reaching out to folks to let them know about resiliency, break down what it is, break down this 800-page plan, and hope that they will engage and partner with us as we build a stronger New Bern. Anybody have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir.
During the time of Mumfest, do you all have a video available to show what happened and what we can do now? Would there actually be a video showing?
We are exploring having that resiliency video that I was just talking about playing in the booth. Tony Gatlin, our IT manager, is working with us to make sure we get the TV with great specs that you can view in bright light conditions. So we are working on that technology.
Very good. Thank you.
Board?
I'm sorry. I also have a question. History has taught us, along with data and things that we have seen, that vulnerable communities, such as African-American communities, suffer or are exposed to more adverse situations when it comes to things that are catastrophic. What is your plan to reach vulnerable communities? I look at this list of items here, and I don't see any actually that is conducive to the vulnerable communities. Do you have something in plan, a place, a plan in order to reach that sector of the population?
Many of the goals and objectives within those six pillars are very focused on those communities. What we're strategizing is 11 potential locations for public meetings. That doesn't mean there will be 11 meetings, but we're looking at 11 possible locations to host those meetings. You'll be able to attend in public. There will be a virtual option. We are also going to just record, without an audience, a virtual video that you could watch on your own, in your own time. Those 11 prospective meeting locations span all six wards, so we're really hoping that folks will be able to attend meetings, but we're trying to use some of those methods that people may use. For folks who may not be technology savvy, maybe they could get something in their utility bill. If they visit at Mumfest, we have several things that we can hand them at Mumfest. We have the resiliency distribution list, so folks who do have email, we hope they will sign up for that. I think if we had to, Matt and I could probably get together a half dozen city employees, we could go door-to-door if we had to, dropping off paperwork and calendar invites for people to attend meetings. So we know we have a challenge ahead of us. It's like I said, we want to pull everything out of our communications toolkit to make sure we can reach everyone.
Thank you.
Colleen, what's the timeframe that you're working with on this rollout?
Well, the introductory video will be, of course, ready by Mumfest. The checklists are actually ready to go now. If you want to go to our website, you can get some of those preparedness checklists. We are headed into the holiday season. We're all kind of preoccupied with what we see going on in the Atlantic Basin with Hurricane Ian right now, so we don't want to put a time limit on when we expect the presentations to last. We don't want to give them a deadline. If we're still doing the public presentations and the possible 11-location meetings headed into the new year, that's fine with us. We don't want to put a deadline on giving people an education on resiliency. It's a living document, and we also expect to make a lot of changes to it. That will involve us going back to the public to get them further updated, so this will be an ongoing type of thing.
Starting tonight? Is that right?
Yep.
Colleen, one suggestion that I would have is maybe talk with the school system to see if maybe we could have them play the video, especially in science classes, but probably middle school and high school would be appropriate. Maybe send the cards home with the children. Sometimes they have connections if the parents don't help get the information out, and it's free, other than the cost of printing.
Will do. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just got one question, not necessarily with this. Colleen, the weather alert channel or system that we have now, would you take a second and just explain that and try to explain to the viewers the, how to sign up and the importance of signing up, especially with what's happening in the, with Ian?
Absolutely. Chief Boy of New Bern Fire Rescue did an interview today about New Bern Alerts. This is our new mass notification and emergency messaging platform. It debuted in July of this year. The city sought a new service, or new platform for this service, rather, because we wanted a more interactive platform. We wanted something that would allow us to not only share emergency information, but also general information on behalf of the city of New Bern. So New Bern Alerts, once you sign up, newburnnc.gov/newbernalerts. Once you sign up, you attach your email, cell phone number, home or business phone number to your account, and you have an option to receive information on one or all of 13 categories on the site. Some of those categories include things like street closures, city events, summer camps, parks and facilities, resiliency, New Bern 101. There are also non-emergency categories for police and fire. They'll be used to remind people about child safety seat checks that occur on Fridays. You will still receive weather alerts from the National Weather Service. We do not deploy those. So if you are in the cone of the forecast for a disaster event, the National Weather Service will deploy that messaging, and it will get sent through New Bern Alerts. It's a free service. There is also a mobile app called My Alerts that is available to Android users as well as iPhone users, and we've had a lot of success with it so far. Like I said, we used it today to notify people about resiliency. The street closure for Simmons Street tomorrow, we sent out that information via New Bern Alerts as well today. So it's shown its successes already in folks signing up for the program and us being able to deploy information on demand.
Colleen, could you share how many are currently enrolled?
Sure. In talking to you, I got my numbers a little bit wrong, but we have about 2,500 people signed up for the service. It may not sound like a lot, but we're really only about 60 days in with New Bern Alerts. So if folks are watching us on Facebook or tuned in on City3TV or the website, please go to newburnnc.gov/newbernalerts. It's completely free. You can sign up there.
Anything else? All right.
I'm going to hand out these little cards to you, seven.
Okay.
I have seven. And it has a QR code on it that will take you right to the check list.
Thank you.
Maybe not in this building, right? Light five, and you're welcome. So when you get home.
Thank you. All right. We certainly appreciate the information, it's obviously very timely, so thank you for that. We will move on to item number 12, Consider Adopting Resolution Approving an Interlocal Agreement for Emergency Water Supply with the Town of River Bend.
This time, I'd like to ask Jordan Hughes to come up and present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. What you have in front of you is a resolution to approve an interlocal agreement for emergency water supply with the Town of River Bend. About 10 years ago, the Town of River Bend extended its water system across Highway 17 to serve a portion of the town that resides on that side of the highway. In doing so, they created almost the perfect opportunity to install- In doing so, they created almost the perfect opportunity to install an interconnection between the Riverbend Water System and the New Burn Water System. And since then, off and on, we've kind of evaluated the options, kind of kicked around some ideas, and over the last couple of years, have actually had engineers for the town, engineers with the city, take a look at the hydraulics of it, the distribution system of both sides, to try to determine the feasibility of actually putting the interconnection in there. What we've come up with is there's a prime opportunity to put in a one-way interconnection where in the event of an emergency, the New Burn Water System can supply water to the town of Riverbend. Riverbend has actually been working on some grant opportunities and has secured some state funding that will help take care, I think, of all the costs to put in the interconnection. And in doing so, the next step to move forward is they need to get an interconnection agreement approved by the town council and by the City Board of Alderman. So the town of Riverbend actually approved the agreement last week. The final step in the process will be approval from the Board of Alderman. Everything will be in place that will outline the roles and responsibilities of both the town and the city in establishing the interconnection, as well as how to maintain it moving forward, how the billing will work, how the metering will work. We've had the legal staff from both the town and the city review the agreement, make sure everything in there is appropriate. We've had the engineering staff from both parties review to make sure all the technical details are appropriate, and we feel like the agreement you have before you meets the needs of the town of Riverbend in establishing their emergency interconnection. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Jordan, I have a question. If, obviously, this were emergency-only, how would we bill? Would there be a meter put on there and Riverbend would be billed for the costs?
That is correct, Mayor. There is a meter inside of the interconnection assembly. The meter will be tested every so often. There's a frequency outlined in the agreement to make sure the meter is accurate. They'll notify us and say, hey, we're ready to activate the emergency interconnection. We'll get everything set up. We'll take our meter reading. They'll use it. When they're done, we'll say, they'll say, we're done. We'll shut everything down. And how they're billed, the billing rate, everything is outlined in the agreement.
And Jordan, have you had any plans or conversations with the county about doing the same thing over in the James City area?
We've actually got two interconnections with Craven County Water System. We have one at the industrial park and one out on Highway Fifty-Five West. And much like this, we've actually kicked around some ideas and started like some back-up map and evaluation on what it would look like if we had an interconnection with the county on the east side of the Trent River as well.
So if we had an issue with our water system, they would be able to help supply us, correct?
It's part of that evaluation process. A lot more that goes into it than just thinking you can hook both systems up. There are capacity issues. There's treatment chemistry issues. We treat water differently than they treat water. You have to take that into account. There are hydraulic issues of how much pressure one system has versus the other. Sometimes it's a slam dunk. It's very easy, literally just kind of connect everything, it works. Other times, it's very complex. It requires some level of treatment. It requires some level of either regulating pressure or pumping or boosting pressure. Some of them can get to the point where they're just, they're not cost-effective to, you know, to implement.
So is that what you're saying with, to implement that connectivity with Craven County because of the way that they possibly treat their water would not be advisable, or?
The one in James City that Alderman Astor mentioned, that's one we haven't got far enough with the evaluation to really take any of those factors into consideration, really get to that point. The one we have at the industrial park works real well. It's kind of an isolated system, so we can basically take the entire industrial park and serve it from either system. We've actually used that one a couple of times in the last fifteen years to do tank maintenance. So we'll take our water tower completely down, drain it, we'll do some interior clean-out and maintenance on the interior of our tank, repaint it. And then while we're doing that, we can run the entire industrial park off the county system and then put everything back online once our tanks ready. That situation works very well. It's not just an emergency situation, also works very well for planned and scheduled maintenance.
We used to have a connection. It was at the foot of the bridge where, for the county. Danny, isn't that true? Didn't we have, used to have a connection for the county at the foot of the bridge? So if there was an emergency, they could use our water? You don't remember? It must not be true then.
We've got a couple on the west side of the Trent River.
Okay.
I don't think we've got one on the east side.
Okay.
They just told you that makes you feel better, says your department? Any more questions or comments? If not, that's the pleasure of the board on item twelve.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the interlocal agreement for emergency water supply with the town of Riverbend.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any more discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Yes. Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion passes. Item number thirteen. Consider adopting a resolution designating the chief of police position to make recommendations to the NC Alcohol Beverage Control Commission on ABC permits. Mr. Hughes?
So, Mayor, historically, we have designated a name, an employee name for this, and to prevent having to continue to come back to the board over and over, we're making the recommendation to name the office of the chief of police to make recommendations regarding ABC permit issuance moving forward.
Board, any questions? No?
Make a motion that we adopt a resolution designating the chief of police position to make recommendations to the North Carolina Alcohol Beverage Control Commission on the ABC permits.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Not, a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion passes. Item number fourteen. Consider adopting a resolution approving the execution of an application contract with the NC Governor Highway Safety Program for Bike Safety NC Coordinator.
I'd like to ask Chief Gallagher to make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Alderman. New Burn sits in Region Two of the state. There are eleven regions. The Governor's Highway Safety Program has allowed each one of those regions to establish a coordinator on two parts. One is for motorcycle safety, and the other one is a much broader committee for highway safety issues. With respect to the $5,000 grant for motorcycle safety, this is a position that the city of New Burn and the New Burn Police Department was the coordinator in 2020. We now have an opportunity to take on that role once again in 2022. This provides the New Burn Police Department to have a larger say in how that $5,000 is utilized in terms of utilizing money for training and other opportunities for motorcycle safety. And I could talk a little bit more about the second part now if you wish.
Sure.
So the $25,000 grant that is also offered by the state for Region Two. We currently are the agency that houses the coordinator. This gives us an opportunity once again to have a greater voice and greater influence on how to utilize that money in response to addressing highway safety concerns, specifically training opportunities for our staff. We host roughly nine counties, so the money is not specific to the city of New Burn or Craven County, but the greater region. But we have benefited greatly over the course of the many years we've had that, and we anticipate that the usage of that $25,000, some of that will go towards educating our own officers. I strongly recommend that you approve that and allow us to move forward like we have in the past.
So, Board, he talked about number fourteen and number fifteen. Both require no matching grant out of our funds. Any questions for the chief?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the execution of an application contract with the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program for the Bike Safe NC Coordinator.
We have a motion for number fourteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll do a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. So also, if we want to entertain a motion for number fifteen as well.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving the execution of an application contract with the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program for a regional law enforcement liaison.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Number sixteen. Consider adopting a resolution for the sole source purchase of diesel exhaust filtration system from Ward Diesel Filter Systems.
I'd like to ask Chief Boyd to make this presentation.
In the past, cancer has started to creep up on us, and heart attacks were the main cause of the death of firefighters for a long time, but now cancer is quickly catching up with it. And we're trying to do many things we can to reduce the effect of cancer, and one of those things is installing a filter system on our apparatus, and not only in the fire stations, but on the fire grounds, that will reduce the carcinogens. Unfortunately, there's only one company that does this, and they are the sole proprietor and provider of this particular product, and that's why we need your blessings on being able to move forward this, so we can install this on our apparatus.
So, Chief, so this is something that would be installed in another device that would go on the piece of equipment that they use, like for face masks? Is that what this is?
No, ma'am. It's actually a filter that goes on the truck itself.
Oh, okay.
That has to have, about every ten years, it has to be changed out, but what it does, it stops, basically like a, on a buffer on a car, you know, reduces things, but this just reduces the carcinogens that come out. We have exhaust fans on our buildings, but they're still, we're on fire grounds, they're standing, the engineer's standing beside the fire truck, exhaust there and breathing it. So it's just another way of us to try to reduce the carcinogens that go into our bodies.
Board, any questions?
So, another question to you. So the apparatus that the fireman wears?
That's why they're fighting fire. That's why they're fighting fire. This is more for like, our trucks are inside the fire station, so that means it's started at the fire station.
I got that point. So the apparatus that the fireman wears, that protects him from all of these fumes or whatever that could create cancer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then this new device is going to be added to the trucks because of the fumes and everything coming from the trucks and whatever?
And just to kind of give a little further, we're doing a lot of different things. We have two sets to turn our gear now. We're firing our personnel to clean their gear, it's cold, so they don't take it home with them, they go back to the fire station.
Anything to?
I know one of the biggest problems is when those diesels sit inside this enclosed fire station and they fire them up, they just black smoke the whole firehouse. So this will help eliminate a lot of that diesel fumes from running all throughout the fire station. That being said, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution for the sole source purchase of diesel exhaust filtration system from Ward Diesel Filter Systems.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? A roll call, though, starting with Alderman Brinson.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Okay, item number seventeen. Consider adopting a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for 2706 McKinley Avenue. Mr. Manager?
So Stephanie Coward-Leroy has tendered an offer in the amount of $2,500 for the purchase of this property. The tax value is $4,500. The property was acquired jointly by the city and county through tax foreclosure in 2017. At that time, the city was owed $475.06 in lanes, taxes, interest, penalties, fees, and costs. The county was owed $2,744.06 in taxes, interest, penalties, fees, and costs. If the property is sold for the initial offer, the city is estimated to receive $25.65, and the county is estimated to receive $2,474.35.
Before, Board, we discuss it. Mr. Davis, could you, for the benefit of the new members, kind of give them an overview of the upset bid process and how that works?
Yes, sir. If the board would like to go forward with this process, this upset bid process follows the tax foreclosure process where notices go in the paper, folks are entitled to meet or exceed this bid. If you want to upset the bid, you've got to exceed it by at least five percent or $750. That goes on until there are no further bids, and at that point, the highest bid will come back to you. So this, by adopting this resolution and allowing this upset bid process to start, does not obligate you to accept the highest bid. When the bidding is over, you'll see that number, and at that point, you can decide to proceed with the sale or not.
Any questions from the board?
Make a motion.
Second.
Let me finish here. Make a motion to adopt a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for 2706 McKinley Avenue.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call, starting with Alderman Creel.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Number eighteen. Consider adopting a resolution authorizing the submission of grant applications to the NC Division of Water Infrastructure for the Local Assistance for Stormwater Infrastructure Investments 2022 Funding Program and the LASII 2022 Construction Funding Program. Mr. Hughes?
I would like to ask Mr. Shilla to come up and present this item.
Good evening, Mr. Page. So in this case, we're talking about submitting an application for two separate, actually two separate applications to the same agency for two different programs at the same time. So the first one is for a $400,000 grant, request to construct stormwater assets inventory and assessment, essentially to map, analyze, and plan for stormwater, our stormwater system for the future. And then secondly is to, the second one is to apply for, in your notes it says 3.5 million. That's been revised since this was put out to $4.1 million for the construction of the Duffy Field Stormwater Enhancements project. That is the constructed wetlands project that is adjacent to the cemetery along K Street and then up to Fiddle Street, detention basin that's there now. So that project there is now estimated about $4.1 million to construct. So this is to essentially pay for that and then also for stormwater planning for the future.
So that would include plan, I mean, the phases three and four?
Two and three.
Two and three?
Yes.
Is there how many other phases?
Just one. Phase four is then for park improvements, and this grant doesn't pay for park improvements. It's strictly looking at the kind of stormwater quantity and water quality aspects to the project.
That's fantastic.
Yes.
This is fantastic.
Now, the resolution and the application both talk about grants and loans. So is any portion of this a loan, or can it be, or what's this is?
Yes, so the program that we're applying to, we're applying for grants, but the program is a combination of loans and grants. So it's going to be up to the agency to decide if they will award us all of it as grants, part of it as grants and the other part as loans, or the whole thing as loans. But we're applying as grant. Part of it is grants, and the other part is loans, or the whole thing is loans. But we're applying as grants.
So our action tonight doesn't obligate us. If they come back and say it's all a loan, no grant, we would then have to make that decision?
That's correct, because you will have a second chance at the end, whether, whatever is awarded, assuming something would be, to not accept the award.
Okay.
Matt, on the first application that you mentioned, what will that generate for the city that we don't already have?
So currently, as far as I understand, and if George wants to correct me, the, our current mapping and understanding of the stormwater system is not entirely complete or up to date. Is that correct, George? And so this is to provide that information to complete our understanding of the entire system.
Good evening, Board. Now, the asset inventory will basically be location and determination of the status of every stormwater structure we have within the city, which we don't currently have all of. We have a culmination of different processes, different elevation data, and this would give us one source based off of one data that we can have as a map system to evaluate our drainage system, which we don't currently have in-house.
Would that include both public and private?
It would include everything that is tied to the city that would care in City One.
Okay.
Matt, I just want to thank you and George. I know this has been a lot of work involved with this, and your staff as well. I mean, these are, hopefully, we will get four hundred K and four point one million, because it is really needed to try to get this stormwater under control. I mean, it's been a long time coming, and I just hope that this, that they, hopefully, they will give us all of this money as a grant, so we won't have to worry about loans or whatever. So, thank you for you and your staff, and George, for you and your staff as well.
And just to be clear, it also includes, a lion's share of the work was actually being done by our consultant, who's the, what we refer to as our resiliency consultant.
Okay.
So, and that's being paid for by N-Cor.
Fantastic.
Through a grant through that.
If there's no more questions?
Go ahead.
From the Board on this item, I'll make a motion. Okay. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of grant applications to the NC Division of Water Infrastructure for the Local Assistant for Stormwater Infrastructure Investments, LASII Twenty-Two Two Funding Program, and the LASII Twenty-Two Two Construction Funding Program.
Second.
Have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Number nineteen, consider adopting a resolution to amend the utility customer service policy. Mr. Hughes?
Mayor, we are still working on some of the details for this, and at this time, we'd like to ask to table this so we can continue to work on this to make sure we're ready to present this to you.
We need a motion to do so?
Yes, sir. That'd be great, please.
Any suggested dates on when you want to move it?
We'd like to do it within the next thirty days.
So our second meeting of?
Second meeting in October, yes.
So, Board, we need a motion to table item number nineteen to our second meeting in October.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt, or to table item number nineteen until our second meeting in October.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in, actually, all those in favor of tabling it, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's have it. Number twenty, consider adopting an ordinance for the demolition of sixteen oh seven High Street. Mr. Hughes?
I'd like to ask Mr. Shelley to make this presentation.
It's the Shelley Show tonight.
I knew I should have sat in the front row. Okay. So this is similar to previous demolition ordinances that you've had in the past. It's a structure that is, has been in disrepair for many years, and so it has now been through the entire process and ready for your adoption of the demolition ordinance. Let's see. And you had pictures in your packet that represented the property. You can see it is in very bad shape.
Any questions, Board?
Just for the record, if you look up this home on Google Maps, it shows a nice, beautiful home. But if you drive by there, it certainly is not, so.
Yes, Florence took its toll.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, both Alderman Royal and I received calls today from Kristy Colberg, who is the Director of Operations for the Craven County Disaster Recovery Alliance. They became aware just recently that this item was going to be potentially acted on this evening. So she reached out to us just to give us a little bit of background information. And procedurally, I'm going to defer to Mr. Davis as to the proper procedure. But what Ms. Colberg had indicated to me is that the property owner is at stage five with Rebuild NC. That stage apparently is addressing some financial issues. Supposedly, Rebuild has made a decision on an appeal that the property owner had filed with Rebuild, and Rebuild was going to be communicating that decision to the property owner to determine whether or not they were going to accept the decision that's been made. The property owner is also working with the Craven County Alliance, and the Craven County Alliance would like to have an opportunity to speak with the property owner, to see if the property owner is willing to allow the Alliance to be the property owner's advocate in working this process through Rebuild NC. But they need a little bit of time to make that happen. They're hoping to be able to get the property owner into stage six with Rebuild NC, which is the actual construction phase. At this point, I understand that I know the city's been addressing this issue for at least two years. There appears to have been a general lack of communication from the property owner to the city, from Rebuild NC to the city. So from the appearance of it, from the city's standpoint, is that there is really no activity taking place. However, Ms. Colberg has indicated that there is activity on the property. The city just hasn't been made aware of that activity, and she's hoping to change that. So my question, Mr. Davis, is whether it would make more sense to ask the Board to table this ordinance this evening, or possibly adopt the ordinance, but directing the city not to take any action with regards to demolition for an appropriate period of time, whether that's thirty days, forty-five days, sixty days, whatever the Board would feel comfortable with. So I kind of defer to you as to which would be the best procedure, whether, what legal issues may or may not come into play on that.
Yes, sir. Alderman, thank you. Excellent summary, by the way. The, given the two options, I would suggest the Board table the issue so that we have more control over what's happening. If you adopt a demolition ordinance with a drop dead date and the facts evolve, it'd be more difficult to come back and then amend that resolution or adoption. Which is a segue to say this, and this is the speech that Jamie and I give all property owners. What the city is interested in is improved housing. We don't want to demolish homes. We don't want penalties. We don't want to seize these properties. All of that is not in the public's interest. The demolitions cost considerable money. As you just saw from that prior bid, we never recover our costs for these demolitions. When we spend five or ten thousand dollars to tear these homes down, we end up with a two thousand dollar lot. Not to mention the fact that that might have been a home that could have been saved to house a family. So, given those policy considerations, generally, when we are dealing with a responsible adult, we do extend things thirty to sixty days to continue those conversations. The problem we've had is we've heard nothing from the property owner, and we've heard nothing from NC Rebuild, despite repeated efforts to reach out. Now, it sounds like a third party has intervened and is trying to facilitate some communications, and I take that as a positive. So it would make sense to me to table this for another thirty, sixty days. Maybe we go thirty days, and if we're still not resolved yet, we can add another thirty days. But that keeps it at the front burner, but gives us some flexibility to see if we can get some traction to get this house improved. Makes sense?
Makes sense.
And one of the, I think, the greatest concerns with Craven County Disaster Recovery Alliance is that if we move forward, then she would lose the ability to have any type of recovery from Hurricane Florence as far as with NC Rebuild.
Yes, ma'am. Better safe than sorry, right? We can't put the house back if we tear it down. So I'm all for, let's extend this thirty days, see if we can engage in some thoughtful discussions, and then we can report back to you in thirty days whether or not we have a solution, we need more time, or if it's all falling apart.
Alderman Creel, did they happen to give you any timeline of when they expect to have that decision, and then when construction would actually start?
In speaking with Ms. Colberg, she's expressed a little, I guess, exasperation with Rebuild NC in terms of how responsive they are, not only to property owners, but to other governmental agencies or to groups like Craven County Alliance. So there's a, it sounds like a high level of frustration just trying to work through Rebuild NC's program. She wasn't able to give me any real definitive timeline. And in all fairness, in talking with Mr. Shelley, the property owners around this particular property have expressed concerns about the condition of the property, and that's what initiated the city's action over the last couple of years. So in deference to them, I don't think we want to extend this too long. But I would like to try to give at least the property owner and Craven County Recovery Alliance an opportunity to get some positive action on this. Another interesting, you know, point is that if they are able to get the property owner out of stage five and into stage six, which is the construction stage, that doesn't mean that anything is going to be happening in the near future because of the difficulty that Rebuild NC is experiencing statewide of finding contractors to do the work. So even though the Alliance might be successful in assisting the property owner to get into the construction stage, I'm not sure where that's going to leave us. It might still create a timeframe that is unacceptable to the city.
Only question I have for that is, was this property owner living in this property before it was hit by Hurricane Florence? Did she sit here or she stays?
I don't know the history of the property, so I'm not sure.
They were living there.
Okay, they were living there? Okay. So this is their?
I mean, I thought they were, because I know the house and I know the occupants.
Okay.
In order to qualify for the program, you have to have been living there during Florence.
So this is their home. So they're trying to save their home. And like you mentioned, Alderman Creel, this is a statewide, I must say, nationwide issue, especially with Rebuild North Carolina with problems. So I think that we should at least table this and try to work, give some time, put some time in there, because when you talk about someone's home, I know if it was my home, I want to, this Board and Mayor and everybody else to work with me as much as possible to try to save my home, even though it's a lengthy process, and time is a factor, but I think we need to table this.
I agree. It's discouraging that they haven't reached out to us, you know. I hate that. It's encouraging that they reached out to you guys. So if there can be any chance of saving the home and getting the homeowners back in, I'm all in favor of just give it thirty days and reevaluate it. Maybe something positive will happen.
All right. What's the pleasure of the Board?
To give it thirty days.
I have another question.
Okay.
Matt, can I ask you another question, please? With this, with this particular piece of property, is already with Rebuild North Carolina and Craven County Alliance, is there also, with them already on this program, qualified for that program, could they also qualify for the CDBG project by means that we have for rehabilitation and improvement of homes? Could they fall under that category as well?
Yeah. I'm not a hundred percent sure what the boundaries are for the CDBG funding area, but I would, I would think it is, just knowing the general economics of the area there.
So I need to discuss that with Mr. Asia Fulmore?
Well, so with the CDBG funds, remember, we're going with a subrecipient process?
Right.
So it could end up being that this organization may be ones that receive the funds.
Okay.
Or some funds from that program.
Board, I know you said thirty days. I'd make a recommendation that we table it to ten twenty-five, which would be our second meeting in October. It's just a couple of days short of.
Do you need that as a motion?
Yes, sir, please.
Make a motion. I make a motion that we table the demolition of sixteen oh seven High Street till ten twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
October twenty-fifth meeting.
Second.
Have a motion. We have a second. All in favor of tabling it to ten twenty-five, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number twenty-one, consider adopting an ordinance to amend the drainage improvement, I'm sorry. Twenty-one, consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment for FY twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'd like Ms. Ostrom to make this presentation.
This budget ordinance amendment will recognize the grant funds of nine hundred sixty-four thousand eight hundred and seven dollars from the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management's Hazard Mitigation Program, which was approved on the August ninth Board of Aldermen meeting. Two hundred seventy-six thousand seven hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-three cents from the Department of Homeland Security's Assistance to Firefighters. That was for the self-contained breathing apparatuses. Twenty-five thousand dollars from the Governor's Highway Safety Program for the Regional Law Enforcement Liaison, and five thousand from the Governor's Highway Safety Program for the Regional Bike Safety NC Coordinator. Those were previously approved in line item fourteen and fifteen. Additionally, it will appropriate twenty-seven thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents from fund balance, from the general fund fund balance for the required match for the firefighter's grant.
So, Ms. Ostrom, we're basically just recognizing the grants and putting them in the fund, right?
Yep, and the match.
Board, any questions?
I'll make a motion. Can we consider adopting a budget amendment for FYI twenty-two, twenty-three? Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do a roll call, start, any discussion, questions? We'll do a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey? Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Creel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Item number twenty-two, consider adopting an ordinance to amend the Drainage Improvements Project Fund. Mr. Hughes?
Ms. Ostrom will present this item as well.
This ordinance will amend the Drainage Improvements Project Fund to recognize a hundred thirty-four thousand dollars in grant funds from the Environmental Enhancement Fund, Grant, sorry. This grant will be utilized for phase two of the Duffy Field Community Stormwater Enhancement Project.
Board, any questions?
If there's no questions, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend the Drainage Improvements Project Fund.
Okay.
Have a motion, have a second. Any discussion? Another roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Number twenty-three, appointments. So, board, we've got several. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to look through those. We'll just start with Alderman Prill, if you have any appointments for tonight.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to recommend the appointment of Mr. James Ferguson to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. He would be replacing Richard Parsons, who has served two terms and is ineligible for reappointment. Mr. Ferguson is in the audience in the, in the back row there. He is an associate attorney with the firm of Somrell Sub, just a couple of blocks up the street. His background is, is working in, in, in part with local governments throughout the region. So, I think he would be an excellent fit for the zoning board of adjustment.
Have a motion for Alderman Prill? I guess that was a motion, right?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make that as a motion.
Have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's have it. Welcome, thank you. Any more, Mr. Prill?
Uh, no, I have nothing further at this time.
Alderman Royal?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mr. Peter Dillon to the Board of Adjustment. I understand Mr. Dillon has done an excellent job in his service to the City of New Bern and on the Board of Adjustment.
Have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Dillon is reappointed, anymore?
Yes, sir.
All right. Alderman Astor?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Tim Tayback to the Board of Adjustments. He will be replacing Mr. Jim Morrison, who resigned.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those, any opposed? Mr. Tayback is appointed. Any more? Alderman Astor?
No, that's it, thank you.
Alderman Kinsey?
Not this time, sir.
All right. Alderman Best up the way. Alderman Brinson?
Yes, I spoke with Ms. Barbara Sampson. She was here a minute ago, but she would like to continue on, on the Board of Adjustments. So, I make a motion to reappoint her.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll catch Alderman Best when she comes back. We do have some board-type appointments. There's a couple for alternates on the Board of Adjustments, if anyone has anybody. There's also one for the Highway Seventeen Association, the Library Board, the MPO, and NAKEMPA.
Mayor, I'd take on the Highway Seventeen Association.
All right. Like a motion for your stuff, is that okay? All right, we have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alderman Prill is now on the Highway Seventeen Association. How about the Library Board? Any takers? Sounds like the library.
If I understood what Mr. Davis outlined previously, we can only serve in one capacity.
No, sir. You can serve in multiple capacities as long as you are not serving in, in another appointed position from an outside board. So, you could serve in multiple positions appointed by this board, but not other boards.
Well, if nobody else will take it, I'll, I'll take the Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
All right, have a motion, a second, for Alderman Prill to take over the library position. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, sir. How about the MPO?
Mr. Mayor, I'm volunteering for the MPO.
All right.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, for Alderman Brinson to take the position on the MPO. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
The Eastern Municipal Power Agency. Do we still need to replace Jamisha Harris on the-
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll be do, I'll be glad to do that.
Second.
Unless somebody else wants to.
Anybody?
Second.
All right, have a motion, a second, for Alderman Astor to take over the NAKEMPA. I think that's an alternate.
It, it actually is.
Okay.
So, if Charlie don't go and, and it looks like Foster doesn't go, then I'd have to go, right?
Uh, any discussion? Any questions? All in favor of Alderman Astor taking that position, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Alderman Best, we'll, I'm gonna come back and catch you. We also, I don't know if anybody has any recommendations for the Board of Adjustments. There's two alternate positions.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Is it for the alternate position, or is it your appointment?
It'll be for my appointment.
Okay. Who is that?
Um, oops. Everything just went blank on me. Um, I haven't really got the final ver, okay, from the gentleman yet, but if, if, if this particular one can be tabled, I guess.
Yep, yeah, we'll wait, we'll come back and catch that one. So, for the two alternative positions, if no one has anything, we can table those two as well, come back. We did, we did a pretty good job getting some field tonight, so, good job. All right, that's all for the appointments. Attorneys report?
Nothing for tonight, Mayor.
Uh, city managers report?
We've been updating you the last few days about the status of Hurricane Ian. It is, it is projected to get to our area on Friday, expecting four to six inches of rain as of the forecast this morning with possible flash flooding. So, staff has been working to prepare just in case of anything that does occur in New Bern. Next thing I want to let you know of is, at the last meeting, we talked about a work session. So, the clerk did send around a poll to see what was gonna be the best day based on the responses. We're looking at Thursday, November third. That is suitable to everyone. We need someone to make a motion to call for that meeting.
Where do you want to hold that meeting at?
We'll do it right here.
So, board, we, board, we would need a motion from someone to call for a special meeting to hold our retreat on November the third from twelve-thirty to five PM here at City Hall.
Still move?
Have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go.
That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Uh, new business, we'll start with Alderman Brinson.
Uh, nothing tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
Yes, I do. I'm gonna direct this to you, Attorney Davis. Um, I have been contacted by some citizens wanting to know. So, sir, what is your legal stance on this board when we have petition of citizens asking of citizens to state their address? Are we in violation of any-
No, ma'am.
Of their First Amendment?
No, ma'am. This is an opportunity for a citizen that wants to bring an issue to your attention and to properly address that issue. You need to know who they are and where they live.
So, we need to know where they live? What about if they just state their name?
Let me say it this way. The board can change the policy. The current policy is to give the board some context for who you are and what world you're in so that you and staff can best assist that person. If they don't want to, to, to do that, they can reach out to all of us privately if they would like. That's, that's always an option. I want to be clear. A lot of folks have it in their minds that that's the only way that a citizen can engage with their local government. And as all of you know, who have been serving, you are available by phone, by email, and in person, as are all of us. So, no one should be, should think that, that you have to come and get on TV and say your name and address if you want to connect with us. But if you do want to, to do it in a public meeting, then historically, the board has expected you to state your name and let the board know where they live so that we can better serve them. And that is not a violation of anybody's rights.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted that to be known. I think I had one other. Oh, yes. Foster, could you or Ms. Carrie Warren give me an update on the Pleasant Hill Community Center?
I'll be, I'll be happy to give you an update on that. They're currently waiting for the subcontractor to install drywall. I don't know if they, they started yet. They have not started yet, so they should be at any time once the drywall is installed. Cabinets will go in, and the VCT tie flooring will go in. So, could be another up to six weeks, then we'll be able to do that grand opening and ribbon cutting of that facility. Really looking forward to that.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, also, I just wanted to ask the police chief. You don't have to come up, sir, but is there an officer downstairs or outside this building while we're up here in the courtroom conducting business?
We assign, besides myself, obviously.
Chief, you might as well come up to the microphone, because nobody on TV is gonna hear you.
Big part, yes. Besides myself, obviously, I'm in uniform, but we do assign one staff member, and obviously, we, we see him over here to my left. Sometimes that officer, depending on how crowded it is in the room, they will step outside and would be in, in the lobby area, but they are responsive to the needs of this board and the citizens that are here for safety purposes.
So, sir, you're saying that is you two here tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so at this current time, there's no one downstairs. That's, that was my point. If someone could be downstairs at all times, at that front door or outside on the steps or somewhere, it would really make me feel comfortable. I don't know about the other board members, but it would really make me feel comfortable.
I could talk with the Assistant City Manager to determine what is tactically the more appropriate location for that staff member. I don't think it, it is needed to have three-
Right.
-uniformed officers here. My concern would be that if they are downstairs in the, near the front door, how responsive would they be to come upstairs? But we could have that conversation.
Okay, I would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
So much, thank you. And I have one other thing, Foster. Could you give me a little insight on how or what is going on with the city picnic date? Target date, or what? How, how is it standing, so?
Yes, yes, ma'am. So, I believe a week or so ago, either Achar or Colleen sent out a poll to the Department of Heads, on which was gonna be the best day to be able to offer this event. We looked at weekends and during the week, and I think the overwhelming majority was to do this during the work week. So, we'll actually be talking about the day tomorrow at our, our Department Head meeting. We anticipate this being held in the month of October.
Okay, could you give me a little bit more insights? Is this gonna be a-
This will be a city employee function, not a function for the employee and their family on this.
It'll be four employees and their family?
Four employees, not their families.
You're gonna have a city picnic for employees only, but no family members?
We are having a luncheon for our employees during the week, during the work week, for the employees, not their families.
But the picnic will be for employees and families?
We, we have myself a picnic at this time. We are doing lunch for our employees.
Okay, well, I was under the impression, when you say city picnic, I'm thinking of citywide picnic for all employees and their spouse or children. So, that's not what you're-
If this time, no, if, if the board would like to give us direction to do a picnic for our city employees and their families, we can certainly do that.
Mr. Hughes, didn't a few years ago, we polled the employees, and they said that they would rather have the gift card that we gave them at Christmas than a picnic? Am I dreaming that, or?
I know that it was for the gift cards for Christmas, but I didn't, I don't, I can't remember anything about picnic.
Do you remember us having that discussion, Ms. Clark?
I remember that discussion.
I, I thought that we-
This was at a board meeting?
Yes. I thought that we had polled the staff, and they said that they would rather have something like that than a picnic. I thought, and that's, I thought that's the first year that we did the gift cards. We did it in lieu of the picnic.
If the city clerk could find that information and bring that forth, please, I would appreciate it, because-
I'll check.
Okay, I really would appreciate that, because I was under this understanding when Alderman Harris and I talked about the city picnic, that it was gonna be a picnic on the same lines as we used to have years ago here, where the employees and their spouse and children attended. So, um, this board would rather have just a employees, for our employees to get together and not have a citywide picnic? Just a question I'm asking.
Yeah, I would, I would rather have something that the staff is gonna want and participate in versus us doing something on the weekend where they're not gonna be on the clock and nobody comes. So, I think it's important that we get the pulse of the staff on what they would wanna do.
Yeah. I, I, I agree with that. If you get the poll from the staff and nobody wants to attend, that, that would, that would really deter the whole picnic.
Foster, was the, this last go-around, was, was the work week chosen over the weekend because of paid, being paid on the clock?
We have had a few employees that said that if, if, if they were off on a certain day, that they kind of expect to be paid to attend, attend that. So, that, that was kind of a, a damper. But also, any time of the year on weekends, our employees work pretty hard during the week, and so, they like to have their, their time on the weekends.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, I think I did have one other thing.
Yeah, all the city employees have a lunch hour, and I think having a, a gathering for them where they can come and drive up and sit, spend forty-five minutes or so with the rest of the city employees, have a nice little luncheon, I think that's a wonderful idea. The city picnic started out when we had all of these, the families and children and stuff. You, you remember, it was well-attended. Then it started dying off, and it became a burden to staff because staff had to run out and try to find gifts and drawings and stuff like that. It just, uh, I didn't want to participate in sending my staff out and, as the fire department out to try to get door prizes, because, you know, it looks just kinda bad when a police officer or a fireman walks into your business, say, "Can you give me a door prize?" I mean, what's the guy gonna say? "No." And then your house, your, your business catch on fire or something, you know? That's what he's thinking. So, I, I think having a, a city picnic where, and then maybe at that picnic, ask them to fill out a survey and ask them if they, how they would like to do it next year. You know, but having a luncheon for the city employees where they can just go sit and relax for a little while, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Yeah, that is a wonderful idea. And I also think that a city, a citywide employee picnic with family would be a great idea as well, but I think we should wait until we get the numbers back and when, as, um, I asked the city clerk to do, get the numbers back of, of the employees who doesn't want a city employee picnic as opposed to a gift card. And that's all I have.
All right, Alderman Kinsey?
Yes. It is time for the city manager evaluation to take place again. And we used the Survey Monkey before. And I'd like to know where does the board stand tonight in using that? And I know that we just, we have three new members just to come on. And I think that we need to stay with the flow where we are right now to continue to be able to evaluate it right now for the next, every six months. Is that correct?
Every year.
We, we, we'd have to exit the employment agreement. I know that the initial was six months, and then I covered it every year after.
After this one here, I think.
I'll confer on that.
We've, have we already done your six month, right?
Yes, sir.
So, now it's annually, correct?
That's correct.
So, regardless, it would be time for the annual review. Because you just had your one-year anniversary recently. So, for the new board members, what Alderman Kinsey mentioned, a Survey Monkey, it's a survey. It's a pretty standard form that the, I think we got it from ICMA or either the league. And it's a survey that would go out to each Board of Alderman member. We'd fill the survey out. It's, I think it's a scale of one to five, and then there's an opportunity to put comments for each one of those. That information gets compiled. Then when we actually have that discussion, that's handled in closed session. But the process that we're talking about right now is not privileged under closed session. So, we just need to get a feel from the board to see if the majority is in agreement of that process or if you have any other suggestions or recommendations. Everybody good with the survey? Okay. All right, we'll work on getting that taken care of. Anything else?
That's it, sir.
Alderman Astor? I just, I just-
I just, I just have a question for Kim. Kim, a while back, I was inquired to the state about that CAT, I think it was CAT A project? Where the, the closeout had been completed on last August, for over a million dollars?
Um, I can take a look in that and get back to you.
Have you heard anything?
We went through everything, oh, that it wasn't closeout, we issued the closeout. Um, I'm not sure where this, where it stands right now, but they have not-
You, we hadn't received a check?
No.
Okay, and we closed it out last August, correct? I, that's, I'm sure that's the date, it was last August, where we submitted the closeout?
CAT A?
I think it was CAT A. For over a million dollars.
My hand being deterred.
Well, anyway, if you, I, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but if we haven't received it, if you would let me know, and again, send me the, what, if it was a CAT A or whatever, and maybe even the project number, I'll call, and things are kind of messed up there now because Doc leaving, so I'll call and see if we can shake a tree to get that million dollars from FEMA.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't know if I want to bring this up or not, but-
Don't do it.
There's a, there's a problem here, especially since construction's taking place with parking. And I sit here in this room every night and see all these department heads that are sitting out there. I feel bad for poor Sanya, she comes to every meeting, sits back there, and she never has anything on the agenda. Yeah, I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be in the best interest of everyone, because of the parking issues and everything else, if we just let the city manager determine who needs to be at these meetings and who doesn't need to be at these meetings until we get this construction finished up and, and open up some areas of parking. I mean, again, I feel bad for poor Sanya, and she sits back there all the time and never has, never has much anything on the agenda. I mean, that's just a thought, because, I mean, I travel around and around in circles out there trying to find a parking space, and I-
Uh, also, it's because you had to park a little bit further away, you weren't-
No, I actually found one right up front, but-
Uh, I would, I would actually, I'd take it a step further, and I think even after construction, personally, I've said this for eight and a half years, and I think it's ridiculous that a department head sits out in the audience when they have nothing on the agenda. And I know that in the past, it was done because under new business, if a board member has a question, we call the department head up, we put him on the spot, but if you look at our rules for petition of citizens, it clearly states, "Don't expect an answer back because we're not prepared to give you one", so we should treat our staff with that same respect. That's my opinion, so if you were taking a vote, I would vote for them.
And I, and I agree, if, if there's something comes up that one of the Alderman has a question or something like that, that it can be directed to the manager, and the manager can find out the next morning and send you an e, send us all an email answering the question. But it is uncomfortable, I can tell you from experience, it's uncomfortable sitting back there and being called up and asked a question if you're not prepared to answer, because you don't have the data in front of you as a department head. So, I would, I would just, it's, it's not any type of ordinance or anything like that, it's just a policy that was enacted. Every city manager has done it differently, some city managers didn't require the department heads to be here. Mr. Efferson required it, and I think, you know, prior to that, they weren't required, so, um, just a thought. I, I feel bad for some of them having to sit back there and for all these hours.
Well, I, I think that, I'm surprised they're not all smiling right now, just-
Oh, they are.
I'm sure they are, uh, we'll definitely look at that, absolutely.
Has any gaps or is it just his policy?
Yeah, that's his call.
Okay, I, I think it's your call, right? So, I think I'd be, I'll leave it at that, thank you. And, um, that's all I have.
Alderman Royal?
I don't have anything.
Alderman Prill?
I'm just curious if any board member or Foster, if you or the staff have received any feedback from the sidewalk cleaning program that you recently completed?
So, we did receive a few emails that everyone was really excited that the sidewalks are looking nice and shiny and new again. We've had conversations with public work staff about trying to increase that from two times a year to three times a year. Uh, so yes, the, the comments have been, have been favorable, yes, sir.
Good.
Downtown, you're talking about the sidewalks, downtown?
Yes.
Um, just one thing I was gonna bring up is the consent agenda. So I know years ago, the consent agenda was used quite a bit, and I think three boards prior decided to kind of stop that in the spirit of transparency. Two boards brought it back, but we kind of said, "Don't put anything that has any financial implications on there", and then now I think we're still following that, but there's still some things that don't necessarily have financial implications immediately. Um, and for example, I, I brought this one up earlier tonight, so the attorney would give us a little overview. So when we're starting the upset bid process, while there may be money tied to that, the decision that we're making to start the upset bid process is not a financial decision. So that is an item that could be put on a consent agenda. And Mr. Davis, I believe that any item that's on a consent agenda, if any board member would like to pull something from that, you can do that, and then that way we can discuss that. So, I say all that, if there's no pushback on the next agenda, the clerk would have a little more levity to add some things to the consent agenda to help expedite the flow of the meeting, if anyone is opposed to that or would like to discuss it.
Closing streets is a prime example. And I think every board member, especially new ones, need to understand that if there's something on the consent agenda that you want to discuss, you just simply, we just simply pull it and discuss it, and then it's voted on separately.
But- Like tonight, we, we adopted a resolution designating the chief of police position versus an actual name. That would've been one that could've easily been on a consent agenda, didn't really require a lot of discussion, so. Anyone opposed? Okay. Uh, do we need a closed session?
Yes, Mayor, members of the board need to discuss the potential acquisition of real property pursuant to one forty-three, thirteen-eleven, A five, and also discuss some potential economic development incentives pursuant to one forty-three, thirteen-eleven, A four.
Have a motion for closed session?
Second.
No, I need a motion.
Oh, I make a motion, and we go into closed session?
No, a second.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're in closed session.